Good evening, I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. Take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance is applied.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scirvano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Dr. Harner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
With six present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, I don't think we have any students here tonight to recognize for helping with the media, so we'll move on to the petitions and communication portion of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for the freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates according to this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to thirty minutes total. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you'll be contacted in timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meeting in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with these guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the one who will be next. If you're the second person, please come to the front. We do have a clock on the wall to help you with your time for two minutes, and we have, I think, three speakers tonight, so we will start out with Allison Wang to be followed by Pastor Anthony Greer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I actually want to congratulate a few Board members tonight. On the district website, three Board members' emails are listed as their district email rather than their personal email, and I think this is the right step toward making the district transparent. I would like to recommend for the remaining Board members who do not use their district email to follow this model. Here's a list of several school districts in Illinois. Adly E. Stevenson High School District 125, Northfield Township High School District 225, Indian Prairie CUSD 204, Naperville CUSD 203, Barrington CUSD 220, Hinsdale Township High School District 86, and Elmhurst School District 205. As you may have recognized, all of these districts that I have mentioned are among the top in the state of Illinois, although that's not what I want to focus on today. In all of these top school districts, each and every Board member uses his or her district email. In past cases across the entire country, for example, just very recently in U of I, people have used their personal email accounts to hide discussions about controversial or sensitive issues. Now, I do not mean to imply that anyone does this, but it's always better to be safe rather than scary. The subject of ethics exists because of past misuses, but not because everyone here is a bad person. So, I would recommend that business emails concerning about the district remain on the business email account and personal emails remain on the personal email account. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Pastor Anthony Greer to be followed by Prophet Youssef.
Good evening. Now that there is a vacant seat, we're hoping that this district and some of the members will not put their hands in selecting or trying to get their own candidate to fill the seats such as they did when District A was up for reelection. We're hoping to get someone to fill this seat with integrity, character, and values, and willing to hold everyone accountable. But we're here tonight to basically start this year off with a clear and concise message that this district must make changes for the betterment of the African-American students, also that this district will not continue to formulate nor operate according to the blacklist, keeping well-qualified and certified black staff from becoming educators or administrators. We will not allow you to continue with this disgrace and unethical behavior such as last year. Therefore, if our leader cannot be a part of this community servicing black families, staff, and students and balancing this thing out, we first demand that it be immediate resignation. The second demand will be, we'll show you better than we can tell you. But the question I want to ask you is, how could someone meet with an African-American think tank and not want to meet with the black community? So, the message will be sent, and it is concise. We will hold you accountable.
Thank you, sir. Prophet Youssef, you're next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What I want to speak about, the legacy of slavery still exists in public schools today. None of us alive today had any direct involvement in slavery in America, but we continue to be affected by its legacy and could even be perpetrating it in subtle, everyday ways. One of the ways the legacy of slavery manifests is through the school system. The school system has been deeply affected by our slavery history, most notably in ways that relate to present-day school segregation. Identifying the legacy of slavery, one of the many striking aspects of slavery, was the forceful denial of education to slaves. There's historical evidence to suggest that the insistence that black Americans don't need or shouldn't have the same quality of education as whites persisted even after emancipation. But how does this history get reflected in the contemporary school system? We find that one of its consequences, greater, black-white school segregation, uses contemporary and historical census data for all counties in the South. We find evidence that indicates a positive relation between the concentration of slaves in 1860 and black-white disparities in public schools enrollment during the 2006-2010 period. Most importantly, our results suggest that white private school enrollment is greater in counties where slaves were more heavily concentrated in 1860, thereby leaving black students overrepresented in public school. We must learn from history. It is perhaps no surprise that slavery is associated with inequality and disadvantage for the enslaved population. However, what is notable is that this connection persists more than 150 years after abolition of slavery. Despite rulers and legislates aimed directly at reducing school segregation in the time between slavery and today, it is far from being a distant issue, and it needs our attention. Segregation negatively impacts disadvantaged groups, but has little effect on those who are already advantaged. As a result, school segregation helps perpetrate the cycle of disadvantage that black kids already face. Sixty years after historical Brown versus Board of Education court case, new conversations are starting about how the dream of inclusive society has been achieved.
Thank you, sir, I'm sorry your time is up, appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Ms. Jackson?
So, for those of you who are not aware, Board Member Powers resigned her seat last week. And so, I just want to publicly thank her for her service. There are many words that I could use to describe Mrs. Powers, but if I had to choose one, it would be genuine. She genuinely cared about people, she genuinely cared about the issues, she genuinely worked to find resolutions, and so I want to wish her the best on her future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other Board member comments? And I too also want to say thank you to Mrs. Powers for the time she served on the Board for four years. She worked diligently and was a champion for public education in our community. Mr. Rollins?
And I'd just like to echo that, I was going to say it as well, but Mrs. Jackson stole my thunder, as usual. Mrs. Powers and Mr. Scirvano and I were all the class of 2011. We all got elected at the same time, and I think we went through, were at that point and probably still is, the largest number of candidate forums for a school board that has ever been held. It was kind of a bonding experience, and I just participated with the IBB process with Mrs. Powers to a successful conclusion, so I'd like to add my also, my best wishes for her and my thanks for her service on the school board. She and I didn't always agree, but we had good disagreements, we had good discussions, and she brought a perspective to the Board that I thought was an important perspective and an important voice, so I wish her well.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items: the meeting minutes of August 11th, 2015, purchase orders, payroll, accounts payable, contracts under 10,000, and travel; the recurring contracts for Circles of Learning, the 21st Century CCLC, one for, that Dr. Wolf presented, one for the Burpee Museum of Natural History, one for the Discovery Center, and one for the contracts for the Rock River Park District, one for YMCA of Rock River Valley; the special education private and residential placement contracts; the fiscal year 16 Northwestern Illinois Association contract; the Intervention Development LLC; the Certified Speech and Language Pathologists for Speech Garden; KMK Media; the other consent items, including the REA Memoranda of Understanding; the Freedom of Information Log; and the following closed session items, including the HR organizational report and professional development report; the appointment of John Rosado as a ten-month dean at Jefferson; the appointment of Sharice Fuller as twelve-month Director of Early Childhood Curriculum and Assessment; the appointment of Heather Salsis as a twelve-month Director of Special Programs; the appointment of Larry Goodrich as ten-month Assistant Principal at West Middle School; the appointment of Blake Hand as a ten-month Assistant Principal at Eisenhower Middle School; the appointment of Ellen Masters as a twelve-month Special Education Administrator; and the appeal of Uniform Grievance Decision pursuant to Board Policy 2.260. Did I miss one?
No.
Okay. Oh, is there a motion in a second to approve the closed session consent items? The consent and closed?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that Board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
Seven A and seven K.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
Eight A and all of nine.
All of nine, okay. Okay, we'll take the roll then on the items that were not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and I'll take a motion in a second to approve Item 7A, which was the Circles of Learning Collaboration Agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner. Discussion, questions? Ms. Jackson?
The Circles of Learning, those sites did not close? Am I getting them mixed up with another daycare? Which daycare am I? North Main closed, but not the other, okay.
Okay. The coordinator then call the roll on approval of Item 7A, Circles of Learning Collaboration Agreement.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes with four yeses and two abstain.
I'll take a motion in a second for Item 7K, which is the KMK Media Agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner, any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
For attorney, why does this come back as recurring? I mean, I know there is definitions, because we continue to use their services?
That would be correct.
Has the scope changed or no?
Actually, it's, they've lessened the amount that they're seeking to use the term for, but the same services are being used, or same type of services, yes.
Okay, have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of 7K, the KMK Media Agreement.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, and one abstain.
And I'll take a motion in a second for Item 8A, which is the REA Memoranda of Understanding.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins, any questions or discussion? The coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Item 8A.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one no.
I'll now take a motion in a second for the items all under number nine, the A through H.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner, questions or discussion? None, can't have any. Have the coordinator call the roll.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one no.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you. First of all, I'd also like to share my gratitude to Mrs. Powers for her service on the Board. In particular, the time she put in with interest-based bargaining went above and beyond, and her service will be greatly missed. A couple other things that I would like to share as well, I think we had a good start to the school year. Appreciative we had, everyone from the district office took a school, and we went out to make sure things got off to a good start. And from everything I can see, while there were obviously always room for improvement, I think we got off to a good start. And finally, some really exciting news about the class of 2016 on the ACT scores. The average ACT in 2011 was 17.8. It has increased to 18.5, so we've had almost a full point increase. One of the things I think we can attribute that to is a real dramatic increase. I reported earlier in the spring about a real significant increase in participation in an ACT prep program, and it was really nice to see that we had almost 600 students give up anywhere between four and five Saturdays, and I think that paid off. Now, we are certainly not satisfied with where our results are, but I think part of being in education is celebrating growth, and it's nice to see that there's been a consistent trend of improvement on ACT scores. That means more students in the district are leaving our district college and career-ready, and it's nice to see that kind of improvement. I am confident we'll continue to see additional improvement as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll move on now to committee reports. Mrs. McCulloch, the Education Committee report.
Education Committee met in this room last Tuesday, we could go?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth. And we had a presentation about the strategic plan and a discussion of how the administration will be reporting progress on the goals in the strategic plan and the specific indicators, and how they will be divided between Ops and Education Committee to a minor extent was discussed, the whole cycle for the year. We did introduce two new Board, or two new committee members, and we also had a conversation about any additional reports that the committee would like to see brought forward in addition to strategic plan. It was pretty much unanimous agreement that we would like to continue to work with the Code of Conduct and other reports as deemed necessary by contract and metrics to support those contracts. Those conversations will be had on a month-to-month basis. Our next meeting will take place in this room on the third Tuesday of October at 5:30 PM.
All right, Mr. Rollins, the Operations Committee report.
Operations Committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is here in this room on September 1st at 5:30 PM.
Dr. Harner, Facilities Plan Oversight Committee.
Facilities Plan Oversight Committee met Tuesday, August 18th. We went through our normal review of the status of all of the various projects, of which, and all of the gory details are out on the Board docs site. We also talked a little bit about our communication plans and the posters and various things that are going up and all of the various areas of communication that are happening with respect to the facilities. We began, the committee began a dialogue with respect of the eventual, we started looking at a template and started discussing some elements of the eventual report that we're going to develop, and some of the items that need to be included in there as it relates to the original motion to create the committee as well as the motion to pass, of what the facilities plan originally was passed by the Board. In addition, we had at least a little bit of a dialogue and discussion with respect to the facility closures. I would expect that at our next meeting, we are going to see, we're going to develop a little bit of, so there's several elements to the closure thing that I can at least want to touch on as buildings are closed, of which, at the moment, we, outside of the orig, outside of the, we have ten, I think, schools altogether, two of which are already, have been closed for quite some time, but they fall within this scope. One of the main tenets is no blight related to closed schools. Eight of the ten, there is budget to demolish the school, if that, what ends up happening. I think there was a general consensus of the committee that, and although this is really a Board decision, not the committee decision, but there seems to be a reluctance, I guess I'll say, to become landlords. There is a state statute with respect to selling of the property. If we choose to sell it, it has to go out for bid, and the lowest bidder gets it. There's some risk there as it relates to the blight issue potentially based upon some past experience. The other option is to do governmental transfers to, and there's a big, long list of governmental entities that can do this, that includes city, counties, villages, park districts. And if there are not, we've had a separate meeting with representatives of some, of some, of the city. The Park District of the county was invited but was not able to be there. With respect to interest, there is some interest in some of the buildings on behalf of some of the governmental entities. If there is no interest, then we would have to look to a process of demolishing the building and maintaining land. If there is an interest in a governmental entity taking over, then we would, and this is what we're going to talk about further at our next meeting, is entertaining a process for the community to engage with respect to the possibilities for a particular building and the possibilities of how other governmental entities might consider utilizing the building. And so, we'll come, after the next meeting, I should, I think we're going to compile some sort of a little bit of a decision-making chart that we can get to the Board so they can understand how this process will work a little better, and the committee itself will have a more robust dialogue over the process. The next meeting is, Tuesday, September 15th? 7:00 PM on the fourth floor Superintendent's Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to our action items. Our first action item is the Grant Thornton LLP Actuary and Benefits Consulting Services. That was presented by Ms. Mary Ann Bessonin last time. Is there a motion in a second to approve the Grant Thornton LLP Agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? The coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Item 12A.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Sorry. Jumping ahead. Wasn't paying attention.
Dr. Harner?
Yes, now it's your turn, okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our second item is the $100,000 Governor's Fitness Council Grand Acceptance that Dr. Wolf presented. Is there a motion in a second to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Connor? Seconded by Mr. Rollins, any questions or discussion? Not, have the coordinator then, oh, Mr. Connor.
Just wanted to say thank you to all the governmental groups that got together and helped- Just wanted to say thank you to all the governmental groups that got together and helped with this grant. It was great cooperation, and it should have a great result, so thank you to all of them.
Okay. Have the coordinator then call the role on approval of item 12B, the Governor Fitness Council Grand Acceptance.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Do all three of the speech people together? All right, I'm going to take a mo. Everybody okay with doing the speech therapist all together? All right. Item, I'll take a motion for 12C, D, and E, which are the Certified Speech and Language Pathologist Agreements for Cumberland, McGraw, and Solian.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Not, oh, Ms. Jackson.
I just pulled up the first one, C, and it says a contract under $10,000 is being submitted in order to begin the school year IEP compliant is. So does that $10,000 come off the $82,000 amount? Is that in addition to?
The statement on the con, the contract you have in front of you says it's, it's inclusive of it. So we did the $10,000 to begin the school year, but the $82,000 is inclusive of the $10,000.
And are there certain schools this covers? Or is this district-wide, this is district-wide, correct?
There are particulars, each speech therapist has a, has a, an assignment. I don't know in particular which ones these cover, but they don't, none of them cover the entire district. They all cover pieces of the district.
Any other questions? Okay. Have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of items 12C, D, and E.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes unanimously.
We are now on to new business because the final action item got pulled by administration. That was the lease agreement. So Ms. Holy will present a Community Use of School Facility Board Policy Revision.
This was at the request of a board member that it be changed. It is, I'm not sure why I can't get the redlined version up from Board Docs, but.
Yeah, I couldn't get it either.
But in any event, it's within the first section under Community Use of School Facilities. The second paragraph has been added so that it would allow the superintendent to review and waive up to $10,000 in fees in each fiscal year, and that such waivers would be consistent with the criteria put in place by the superintendent. And so that would be a maximum total of, of $10,000 in each school year.
Ms. Jackson, did you have a question?
I do have a question.
Okay.
So how can a board member make this request? I thought it, we couldn't make, I thought we didn't have the power to request things singularly that we needed to have support. So a board member can make a request for you to change a policy, and you bring it to us?
Under board policy, that would be correct. So under your, your collectively agreed-upon board policy, any single board member can request a change.
So, and I don't know if the board member who is making this recommendation would care to speak to why they want to give the superintendent the authority to waive and review up to $10,000?
Okay.
I'd be happy to. We've had a lot of conversation about recently, especially in the last couple of months, things have been brought to the board to vote on, to waive fees. There, there's been pieces that I, I as a board member have spoken with other board members who weren't certain that they should have been brought even to the board. There are activities that are happening in the community where there are groups who do not do in-kind contributions, but they are doing things to support the district. One of the recent ones that I had had, people contact me on, well, there's a couple of them. So for example, Transform Rockford was doing an education spoke meeting, and we charged them for our facility usage. We have the ethnic parade happening in our parking lot, and we're charging them for the facility usage. God bless you. But there are different areas that support our educational mission, vision goal, and instead of laying, instead of every small piece coming to, to the board, I asked if we could put before the board a consideration of a policy that there was, so to speak, a discretionary fund for the administration, the superintendent to use for situations like that. And by asking to have it brought to the board is merely for the board to vote on it. It's, it, this has not become policy by any means, but instead of having conversations with other board members behind closed doors about if this is the right thing to do, the best place to do it seemed to be on the floor. And so I asked if we could at least have that conversation, and to do so, we needed to bring the policy, the verbiage forward for that.
Or we probably could have had the conversation, if there were consensus, then brought the verbiage forward, correct? It couldn't have went that way? To have a conversation about.
But to have a conversation and gain consensus would mean either daisy chaining, which is against the Open Meeting Act, or may, you know, having a meeting with each individual board member behind, you know, privately.
Or what we're doing now.
And I thought we'd want to have this conversation publicly, and if we don't support it, that's absolutely fine.
I don't think that was the point. What I said is we could have had the conversation like we are now, and then if there was consensus, the policy could have been brought forward.
Ah, I understand.
Yes.
I went to legal and asked, you know, the best way that we could have this conversation. This was what was suggested.
Mr. Connor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if I understand, there's going to be a pot of $10,000, and it'll be up to the discretion of the superintendent on how he waives, whoever presents.
And when I make the request, I didn't put a dollar amount with it, Ms. Jackson. I, that was put in there by legal. I, I did not come up with an amount.
Mr. Connor?
And we can change.
I, I guess in my next question, so how did, then Attorney Holy, you come up with $10,000?
I went with the same criteria that you use for your under $10,000 contracts, so it just made sense to use the same criteria.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
I'm in favor of this because, number one, we want to make sure that the facilities have as great a use as possible for the community. And there are, as Mrs. McCulloch pointed out, some community groups that don't have as much in the way of in-kind contributions. So from my point of view, this allows some flexibility and allows the community to have access to the assets of the community.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Rollins?
I guess I'll also say, I remember Mr. Connor actually suggesting something like this during one of our debates about one of the fee waivers that came in front of us, and we've had these, we've had these situations where the administration keeps bringing fee waivers to us for things that don't seem to fit the, the requirements of the fee, of the policy, and, I mean, they are involving community groups that we do have interactions with. So I've, I think it's at least good to consider. I don't know if $10,000 is the right amount, but I think it's, it's good to have some sort of pot of money that the superintendent can use to just waive fees, as long as it's limited. We don't have something that's open-ended. We know we've got some limits on it, and if the administration wants to budget for it, then they can budget for it.
Dr. Harner?
Did we actually budget a revenue line item for this? Do we know? No. We're not, this isn't costing us anything. I guess it's the potential, assuming that there's up to this amount, that we wouldn't, but it's not, it's not like we're spending money that we didn't intend, that we're, you know.
I apologize. I, I think I misunderstood the question. I'll have to defer to Mr. McConaughey on whether we have the revenue item in there. I know we, what I was thinking of is in terms of have we budgeted this as an expenditure, and that, I, I know we wouldn't have anticipated it. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we have the, the actual revenue as part of a line item or not.
We budgeted a revenue line item for fees, and we budget that in a conservative way that we anticipate we will collect at least that much, if not more. So it's a, it's a general estimate of revenues because it's not a defined revenue stream.
So, is it 10,000, is it more than 10,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. McCulloch?
I did not want to take your, your idea. One of the things that happens on this board sometimes is we have conversations, and we have discussions, and then they just go in circles, and then they don't go anywhere. And so this way, we can talk about it, vote on it, and then move on. So I apologize if I stole your thunder there.
Okay. All right. This will be presented at our September 8th board meeting for a vote then. Our second item on the new business or other business is our board vacancy, and this is me and Mrs. Holdley. And I'll do my best to go through all the rules, but we do have a vacancy. As everyone knows, with Ms. Powers' resignation, we have 45 days as a board to fill that vacancy. The applications are online and also available from Laura Fromm, our Board Secretary, and we will accept applications until September 11th. I just want to point out that there are rules of, that you have to meet certain criteria. Applicants must meet all of the qualifications, including to be a U.S. citizen, at least 18 years of age, a registered voter. They must reside in Illinois and in Sub District G for one year preceding the appointment, and the appointment will be for the remainder of the term, which is through April of 2000, until the election in April of 2017. And our goal is to have this appointment made by the 22nd of September board meeting. So, did I hit them all? Okay, all right. So just a reminder that Sub District G, the map for that is on our website, so anyone in the community who wants to know where Sub District G is can take a look on the map and see where that is, and that person, applicants, like I said, must have, must reside in that sub-district representative. So our goal will be to do interviews the week of September 14th. It is my plan to do those like we did last time, which was in an open meeting, and I'm looking at Wednesday evening, September 16th. So please, I sent out an email to everyone today. Wednesday or Thursday would work. One of our board members asked that we do it on Wednesday. So we would do that at 6:00 or 6:30 in the evening. Well, does anyone have a preference on the ti, start time, those of you that are traveling? 6:00 or 6:30, which works? 6:30, okay.
Did you say it's been set for the 16th, Wednesday?
There's a, there's a preference for Wednesday, the 16th. I'm, 16th or the 17th would work. Do you have a preference?
The Thursday.
The Thursday?
But if everyone else is Wednesday. It's not, the 16th is on a Wednesday, correct?
Right, yeah. Okay. Anybody else have a preference, or they're okay? Okay. Well, let's, well, let's go with 6:30. Dr. Harner, you okay with Thursday? Okay, all right. Thursday, the 17th of September at 6:30 PM in this room, we'll do an open meeting, an open interview of all the applicants at the same time. And what we did last time was we met then in closed session afterwards, and made our decision, and informed the applicants. So it would be, and then we would bring that to the board for a vote on the 22nd. Ms. Jackson?
Reconsider. Wednesday will work better.
Wednesday will work better, okay. All right. So it's 6:30 on Wednesday, September 16th. That's when we will do the interviews. Okay?
If you have, if you have applicants who aren't available, do you want to set an alternate day?
I would have, I'd prefer to have them work around our, what works best for the board. Okay? Any questions or comments about that process?
One comment, which it's an excellent process, so thank you. This makes a lot of sense.
Of course it is.
What is the, I don't know, authority under which, this isn't a board meeting, what is this?
It is a board meeting.
It's an open board meeting, yeah.
So will we have everything else about it, you know, closed, et cetera, comments and so forth, or is it a special format?
It would be a special meeting, so you still would have to have public comments available for public comments, but as I recall, the last time, you also allowed the public to submit in certain questions, and then those would be asked of the candidates as well. So if, if members of the public want to submit in on their comment cards, questions for the applicants, they could do that.
Okay. So will this be published, this process, be out on the website, I assume?
It will.
Okay. That's it? Thank you.
Roberta, I wanted to ask you a question. Did you say you had the questions from the last time we did this? Okay. We do have those, okay? We're not, we can use, we have, we have questions that we have used, but we.
We also have potential questions on the administrative regulation that was sent out with the process outline. And those are suggested questions, so you can develop your own, and as individual board members, you could have them identify one or more questions that they want to ask.
Mike?
Is there any sort of time limit on it, or is it just open-ended? I just, I'm just curious. I.
That would be for you all to set.
I'm not suggesting there is one. I just was curious. That's for us to decide. Okay.
Miss?
Yes. Any recommendations on the time? I was thinking an hour and a half.
Well, and there's a couple of.
Up to, up to an hour and a half.
There's a couple of ways to, a couple of questions I have about format as well. First of all, I'm assuming we will not have questions out ahead of time, especially if we would invite additional, but then if we interview total, solely one candidate, and then the next, and the next, the first, the subsequent candidates have the luxury of knowing what the questions are, or we do it question by question. So just to give some thought to that whole format, and then as each question goes along, alternating who starts. Does anybody remember how we did that?
That was how you did it. All of the candidates were up on the stage at a, at a school, and, and you started. Each one got to start with the question, so the others would hear the other answers and, and be able to modify it in a debate-type format, I suppose. But yes, they, so they all would hear the answers and hear the question, and, but each one would have a different timing of when they got to respond, and everybody has, yes.
Dr. Harner?
Did, did we allow, did we allow the interested parties a, some sort of opening statement or comment or something?
I believe we did do that, yeah. Closing statement. Our closing. Any other questions? Yes.
I assume in terms of layout, that that's a TBD, or do we know, like, will they be sitting over there? I mean, is that the way?
Before, the board members were sitting out in the audience, and each one would come up and talk in the microphone, and so the candidates.
Are up here?
Up here, yeah. That was my thought, was to have the candidates up here. We'd be sitting out there.
I see. Okay. Yeah, right.
Any other recommendations or suggestions? I've lost my agenda. There it is. Okay. Any other new business? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Move by, now, those in favor say aye. Oh, same sign. We are adjourned at 7:48.